On the agenda, we've done some changes. Came up down in general business. Section B, item two will be taken out and item four will be taken out. April is sick and not here and item four will be ran through. We'll add on at the bottom of that list, read it on the foreclosure basis. That being said, here a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Approval of minutes from October 6th. Just everybody's read over that, looked over. You entertain a motion to approve?
And make a motion that we approve the October 6 minutes. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Open the floor for public comment. Anyone have anything to say? Testing the guidelines is on the back of the board over here. Three minutes to speak. Anybody wish to speak?
I could, I have comments or I can postpone my comments until, um, section B five. Mr. Shugby is supposed to speak on behalf of the chamber of commerce.
Either way.
Do you want me to wait or?
Yeah, they'd be behind. Oh, come on. Bill says he'd make me up there. Come right along. Hit him ass.
I called you up there and I, I hadn't seen the agenda, so.
We get to look at the box that way.
So what I, I've given you is this one. What I've given you there is, um, it's an email dialogue that I had with a friend of mine, Patrick Woody, who is, um, the president and CEO of North Carolina Rural Economic Development Center. And he's the very first chamber of commerce director here in Allegheny County. And when I had this dialogue with Patrick, I really didn't know what to do with it or how process it. So I just kind of held on to it. But then after the last couple of weeks and some conversations that I've had with you all and with, um, the chamber commerce and the TDA, I thought it would be interesting for you if I came and presented this to the board. So my question to Patrick was, who were the local leaders who, who first recognized the need for chamber commerce? Patrick said, there were many, but a few stand out. Dr. Ted Stern, who was the longtime president of the College of Charleston and an Allegheny County part-time resident at Air Bowls Gap, was the true spark plug and visionary. He was also a key figure in the founding of Blue Ridge Bank, and I believe was the original chairman on the board of the bank with Guy Scott as CEO. The chamber started in 1983, the year I graduated from Allegheny High School. In the second floor space of First Citizens Bank in Trojan Village Shopping Center. Other key people were Bob Black, most of all the Lowe's retirees were charter members. There was strong support from the Roaring Gap Club community and High Meadows. Tom Richardson, George Sheets, Blue Ridge Electric and Skyline all stand out as strong early supporters. The next question I asked, asked him was, what was the original vision for the chamber organization? Patrick replied, Allegheny's county's first, first had a chamber of commerce in the late forties, early fifties. I know little about that effort and why, and why it didn't continue. But the strong business organization in the lead up to the 1983 creation of the Allegheny Chain County Chamber was the Sparta Retail Merchants Association. They largely supported the effort to transition to a new chamber of commerce. I think the founders saw it as being the key business and economic development support organization. With Sparta being the only, only municipality in Allegheny County, it was easy to get everyone behind the county line, chamber of commerce. My next question for Patrick was, in your view, how has the chamber made an impact since then and does it still serve a vital role today? Patrick replied, I was the first paid executive director of the chamber. Sue Fender, my executive assistant, was already in place and had been for several years by the time I started. My role started as half time, but quickly became full time. I was hired as the first executive director, but part of my job responsibilities was to be the economic developer for the county and town for my job at the chamber. To support my position, chamber leadership, Joe Ward with Brinkco, Willard Moxley, retired school teacher and others obtained an ongoing annual probation from Allegheny County and also from the town of Sparta to pay my salary. During my seven years as chamber director, we were successful in recruiting top economic development projects in the state of North Carolina. In 1993 and 1998, Bristol Compressors and Magnolia Manufacturing. We created an industry council consisting of the largest manufacturing employers and a retail council consisting of Sparta merchants. The retail council became the Sparta Revitalization Committee and we were successful in 1998 and made it Sparta the smallest town to ever be named in North Carolina Main Street community by the Department of Commerce. We were also key to working with school superintendent Susan Melo to create the cyber campus at the high school, which was later named A Anderson Hoover Cyber Campus. The cyber campus was a joint project with the North Carolina School of Science and Mathematics in Durham. We definitely punched above our weight for a few years in the mid to late nineties. Other volunteer leaders from my days are too numerous to mention, but include Joe Ward, Darryl Simpson, Margaret Kraus, Peggy Brady, Tom Burgess, Debbie Bear, Russell Sheets, George Sheets, Agnes Joints, Rocky Prophet, Clint Bev Salt, Douglas Allen, Tom Douglas, Dan McMillian, Don Adams, Brian Edwards, Tom Richards, Richardson and many, many more. And I think we all know some of those names. And my last question to him was, what do you see as the key ingredients for a strong and effective chamber of commerce? Patrick, Patrick replied, a core commitment to economic development, job growth and new investment in Allegheny County. To be financially viable, the chamber needs ongoing financial support and partnership of Allegheny County and the town of Sparta. It needs to view job growth as a three-pronged approach consisting of, one, recruitment where possible, two, retention, commitment to the growth of the businesses that are already here, and three, entrepreneurship to grow your own approach that the county is known for. I did, I promise I did not pay him to write these answers. But I thought it was great to have this foundation. You know, as, as I was entering my second year and when I reached out to Patrick, we have seen a strong growth in tourism in Allegheny County during my tenure, but I don't think tourism is the only thing, important thing. Um, it certainly doesn't feel like that's all we should be doing at the chamber of commerce. And we want to be more involved, be more helpful. Um, certainly we're in a place to serve the small businesses of Allegheny County and not all those are tourism based. And so I just, I wanted to express my thanks from myself and the chamber for what you're doing to, uh, help us kind of find our footing again in Allegheny County.
Appreciate that. That's some good information there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on down, presentation to the board. Samantha Gray, Director of Outreach.
Hi, good morning. I'm Samantha. I'm the Director of Outreach for the Division of Community Revitalization at the NC Department of Commerce. I'm here today to talk about the Renew NC, um, program that we're administering to, from the Department of HUD to, um, help with Hurricane Helene recovery. So the state was awarded $1.4 billion from housing and urban development and these funds are, um, allocated here, 807 million to single family housing, under 91 million to multifamily housing, 53 million to workforce housing. Our only program that has launched so far is that single family housing program. We launched it on June 16th and applications are due December 31st. Our multifamily housing program will launch at the end of November and our workforce housing for ownership will launch next summer. Uh, we have a community infrastructure program for 194 million, economic revitalization program for one and 111 million administration. So those two last programs will launch early 2026. So for HUD requirements, we need to spend 80% of the funds in those red counties there. Those are the HUD identified most impacted and distressed areas. Allegheny is a blue county there, which the state identified as a mid-county. So 20% of the funds can be spent in the blue counties. Um, HUD also requires at least 70% of the community development block grants for disaster recovery, which are these funds be spent for low to moderate income households and communities. We have an action plan on our website and it's still open for public comment because of the federal shutdown and we're still awaiting for that approval, but it's on our website if you'd like to look at it. Um, next slide. So for the program that has launched so far that I want to talk about today, the single family housing program, this mission, the mission of the program is to address remaining unmet need for owner occupied housing that was damaged on September 27th, 2024 by Hurricane Helene. So this program can help refurbish, rehab or reconstruct or replace, and in some cases even reimburse homeowners for damage incurred from the storm. Um, again, this program is administered by, um, the Division of Community Realization at the Department of Commerce. Next slide. So what can the program provide? It can repair or totally reconstruct an owner occupied, single family house that's within a certain, um, parameters around. It can be a stick fixture, still stick built structure, a modular home. Um, it cannot be like a yurt or an RV. Um, what kind of finishes does the program provide? These are builder grade finishes. We have more answers there on our website at renewnc.org, which I'll make sure Lisa has all of our, um, links for you to look at the other questions. So to be eligible for the program, the biggest thing is it has to be owner occupied. It doesn't mean you need to have been in the home during the storm, but it needs to be your primary resident. Uh, you have to be up to date on all of your taxes and insurance. And if there's a mortgage on property, it must be in good standing and you must be a citizen or a legal, um, alien here. Excellent. Documents, there's a lot of documents you need to apply, photo ID, of course, income. Um, we, the, um, also requirements for this program are you need to be 60% of the adjusted median income for Allegheny County. Can also be 60 to 80%, that's the next phase, and up to 120%. Uh, proof of the primary residence, proof of damage, any sort of duplication of benefits documentation. So if you received, um, any sort of insurance claims or FEMA, that needs to be part of your application. It doesn't mean that you're disqualified, that'll just be, um, looked into your, um, award. Next slide. This is the process. You gather all your documentation. You can apply either online or by phone, or you can go into one of our centers that I'll talk about later. Um, you'll have, you'll be designated with a case manager. This case manager will walk you through the whole application process and then lead you through the, then the next step is eligible, eligibility review. And then we have the duplication of benefits. And then we start the site specific environmental review. The state takes on that burden for all of our programs. And then we determine the award and then the applicant can either accept the award or not accept the award based on what we have deemed eligible. And then you go through, um, the construction and then move in close out. This program does not pay for relocation during the time of reconstruction. That's something that we're working with the long-term recovery groups in each county to help, um, place folks. That's something that this program's only for the rehab and reconstruction. There's an appeals process. If the, if the applicant does not like their award or they think that they are actually eligible and they were deemed ineligible, that first level goes back to our implementation vendor horn who's handling all of this. And that'll be reviewed and then it come, it gets kicked back up to the state if, um, there's any sort of question about that appeal again. So so far, as of last Thursday night or Wednesday, Thursday, when I sent this to Lisa, there was 37 total applicants in Allegheny. 29 were in the review process and five so far have been confirmed eligible. I know that three of those are actually in environmental review right now. And as far as we know, none have been determined ineligible. These are our permanent locations. These locations in Asheville, Boone and Marion are open nine to six, um, Monday through Saturday. You can also apply online or through the app or you can call. Next slide. Allegheny does have an office in the top left corner there at the NC Works Career Center that's open Wednesdays from nine to four. So folks can go in there and meet with a case manager if they want more information about the program or to start their application. And those are the other kind of part-time offices that we have in the region. Um, here is a breakdown of the rest of our programming, so where all the funds are going. That's small projects for multifamily housing. That's actually our small landlord program and that will end up being administered by our single family housing program. So if a landlord owns four or fewer units, they can apply, um, to the, to the program to reconstruct, um, any lost rentals. Um, so for the multifamily housing program, private developers, local governments, public or private developers and nonprofits can apply for that program. Workforce housing for ownership is local governments, public, nonprofit, um, nonprofits. Economic revitalization, that's for, um, commercial districts and that's for local governments or nonprofits. And then the community infrastructure is for local governments only. And those last two will launch sometime in the new year. And that was it. Um, I, we have a newsletter that I'm going to make sure Lisa has the, um, the link for everyone to sign up for the newsletter. There's also going to be open office hours held every week with the school of government to walk through what applying for the other programs entails and otherwise, um, let me know if you have any questions.
Have any questions?
How, how long this program will get through?
We have six years to spend the funds. We, um, our goal is to have the single family housing program finalized in three years. So that's why we have a shortened application window for applicants. So it ends December 31st and construction has already started for some applicants. There are phases based on eligibility on income. So, um, someone may be eligible now, but their income's at 120%. So we're holding on to those. So those folks may start their construction like later on next year.
Yes, Mr. Chair. What exactly will, will a family receive if they, if, if the application is accepted? What will they get?
So they will, um, we determine their eligibility on their benefits. So if they have, let's say, it depends on how their housing size too. So let's say it's a, um, four person household, two parents and two children. Um, we look at the, the, um, income of both working parents. Um, there is a preference given to households that have a senior, each 62 and above, a child of 18 or under, or some of the disabilities, they're put in that first phase. Um, we determine eligibility based on like what their house was before and their income. And then if they received any sort of insurance benefits or FEMA, and then that then determines their award. So it's less those two benefits. And if they didn't get those benefits at all, then it's just kind of the maximum amount. The maximum amount for this program for a single family home is $450,000. We can go up to a four bedroom unit determining, um, if someone has a manufactured home and they own the land, we can replace it with a stick built. If they own the manufactured unit, but do not own the land, they rent the land or lease it with the landlord's permission, we can replace it with another modular unit.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Bobby?
Uh, can we get a copy of the program? And do you have a business card or something?
Yeah.
I'd like one if you do.
And we, I have some pamphlets too of this program too.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? We appreciate the presentation real good. Next up, Tiffany Bowyer and Shane Lynn. Not tripping you, honey.
Good morning.
Morning.
Today we're here to recognize Brian Wood. He retired on October 1st from the detention center and he's provided the county with 12 years and three months of service. And we would like to present him with this plaque of appreciation for all of his hard And now we're going to turn it over to Shane.
All right. Morning.
Morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us a moment to recognize Sergeant Brian Wood, who has served in our detention center since 2014. Before coming to Allegheny County, Sergeant Wood had already completed a full career in Florida corrections and were fortunate that he chose Allegheny County to continue serving. Over the years, Sergeant Wood has been a steady presence and a reliable leader, mentoring new officers, handling tough situations with professionalism and setting the example of what it means to serve with integrity. Sergeant Wood, on behalf of Sheriff Maynes, the entire sheriff's office and Allegheny County, we thank you for many years of dedicated service and wish you the very best and retire.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve in Allegheny County. Coming from, uh, coming from Florida 18 years ago, never thought that I would ever get back into law enforcement, but, uh, the members and the command staff and fellow coworkers have treated me like family ever since I've, I've been here. And I appreciate it more than you know. I'd like to thank my family who have stood behind me for, for all these years, good times, bad times. And I'd like to thank the, the Lord, uh, Lord above for blessing me with my situation.
Brian, we'd like to thank you for choosing Allegheny first off and thank you for your service to the sheriff's department. We really appreciate you're, you're a good guy. Let's get us a, somebody got a cell phone, we can get a picture here in front of the, Next up is Rita Miller.
Good morning.
Morning.
So first today, um, we begin to do the achievements of my departments. So the license plate agency, Jessica and Lindsay have shown exceptional dedication and professionalism in earning the trust of our community by providing efficient, accurate vehicle service. Their transition into the tag office following Candace's move to deputy tax collector was a notable change for our citizens as Candace has been a familiar presence since the office's start. Despite this, Jessica, who joined us in August of 24 and Lindsay in December of 24, quickly mastered the state titling and registration system and have exceeded our expectations. It's not an easy system to learn. Um, your license plate agency has successfully cut the negative perceptions often, often associated with DMV services. Our wait times are normal and customer service is outstanding. Both of these ladies go above and beyond to try to help our citizens, um, with the issues they may have. We often receive positive feedback from residents of other North Carolina counties who choose to come to our Allegheny DMV for their services, basically for our efficiency and our reputation of helpfulness and friendliness. Every month, the DMV randomly pops up to do an audit. Um, we don't know when they're coming, um, but, um, the accuracy, um, is 99.11% for your office. And that's, that's great. That's showing testament to their attention and to detail and commitment. I look back on the nine months of 2024 versus 2025 to see how we stood and our compensation has increased 4% and the number of transactions that are being done in our office has increased 6% over 2024. Jessica and Lindsay are both scheduled to take the property tax listing and assessing, which is the laws or the general statutes, of course. Lindsay's actually doing it virtually this week as we speak. Um, Jessica has been working with Jeff to start cross-training on the vehicle tax system. And Lindsay has worked a little bit through with Theresa on some deed transfers. So we're trying to do some cross-training there as well. Um, Lindsay's also our in-house artist and that has created some brochures for us, which has saved us money. Um, we've not got to do quite as much cross-training than as I would like, but we are continuing to work on that. And overall, your tax, or your tag office, I'm sorry, continues to improve operations and increase our revenues year after year. Um, I tried to find what we initially thought our revenue stream would be when we took on the tag office and I can't seem to locate that, but I, I know we surpassed what we thought that it would be at that time. Um, so I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the tag office. I brought Jessica down with me who is the supervisor, but since Lindsay's in class, I couldn't bring her down this morning.
I don't have any questions. I got a comment or two that people passed on me, how efficient and friendly you guys are and waiting on customers, that, that says a lot.
Thank you.
Really does. And that cross-training's a good thing. It's, uh, gives you more maneuverability.
All right. Well, I'll move on to the tax office. So to begin with, I'd like to share with you our mission statement that we came up with, uh, a few years ago. And it's to ensure that all Allegheny County real and personal property is listed and fairly and equitably assessed for taxes in accordance with North Carolina statutes to employ all lawful, lawful means to collect all property taxes charged by the governing body and to provide cost efficient and quality service to citizens of Allegheny County. I believe that one of our biggest strengths and achievements is continuing by improving our customer service. We seek to educate our citizens on how and why we do the things we do. Um, we don't say just because law says so or just because we have to. We, we try to explain why we do it and the methods that we use to do it. The teamwork of our department is one of our biggest wins. We face challenges due to retirements in the last couple of years. Anytime you lose 20 plus years of knowledge, you're going to face a learning curve with that position's replacement. And our team members who accepted the challenge of changing positions have, have just exceeded expectations. They've done great. Um, Kelly has gained North Carolina Department of Revenue certification as a personal property appraiser one. In November, Jeff will be eligible to apply for his certification as assistant tax collector and Candace is working on her certification as deputy tax collector. August is historically a challenging month for our office. The tax bills are mailed out, which generates many questions from citizens such as, why isn't I valued like this? Uh, valuation methods we use, tax rate, address updates, things of that nature. And they don't think about this until that tax bill comes. So we had only three evenings this past August that we worked late. That's very, very unusual for us. Um, so that just goes to show that some of the changes in our procedures, such as staggered collector balancing, diligence during our payment processing, along with other team members helping with that balancing in the evenings and mortgage companies being, um, more efficient with their payments as well. 64% of the property tax bill gets collected in August. So for 2025 versus 2024, property tax releases were down 62% and refunds were down 61% from 2024. This shows fewer data entry and appraisal errors and lessens the workload in both tax and the finance office, as well as cuts down on the cost of issuing refund checks and postage. The collection of delinquent taxes through the North Carolina debt set off program and the North Carolina cash program saw an increase over prior years as well due to no new procedures that have been implemented. I'm currently evaluating the process of emailing some past due notices, those that were allowed by law to email and seeing if we get some response to that. If, if initial testing sees success, we'll begin to use email more often than snail mail, so to speak. In the appraisal department, a big achievement by Theresa and one of her goals was to begin using a tablic in the field for her bill reviews. This allows her to be paperless in much of her work. All billing permits, bill notes, change of value letters, photos and other documents are now attached to the property record card. This has freed up valuable storage space, cut down on printing costs and the cost of disposing of our archived records. It also allows for easier access to documents when a taxpayer calls. We don't have to search through storage boxes to find that requested information. We don't have to search through storage boxes to find that requested information. A brief pre-evaluation update, seventy percent of the field review is completed. The data entry job should be completed by the end of February. And at that time, a desktop, what we call quality control process, will begin using the new inventory from our leaf-off twenty-twix... twenty-twenty-six flight. And that's where we contracted, and they'll come in and they'll fly over during leaf-off season. And they'll do a change finder project where they'll lay the new flights over the old flights and give us a report of changes. So due to being in the new position of personal property appraiser, Kelly was not able or not comfortable to do the business personal property audits last year. She has resumed that this year, and she's began using a new form on farm audits, which she's found to be very helpful to her. One of our goals for business personal property is the ability to provide online listing for twenty-twenty-seven. And we're gathering information on how to implement that and what that would look like for Allegheny County. As the leader of these departments, I must brag on this team. They're eager to go to class, gain the knowledge, and make a phone call to another county that has a position that does what they do just to learn how they can better serve our citizens. They work together very, very well. We're a department that most citizens come to during the year. And my team's competency in their role and the customer service they provide is of utmost importance to us. And I believe they deliver that in spades. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
No, I got a comment. I think you all in the tax office both do a good job. Every time I've been in there, just applauding.
Yeah, I totally agree. You got good employees to back you up too. They're a good group up there, and y'all do a good job.
Just a comment that hope you'll push that retirement out about ten more years, and we'll have it perfect. But yeah, thank you for how you run the operations and everything. Everybody... I never hear anything really negative about it. No feedback on that, so I appreciate everything y'all do.
Me, then Bill. You know, I get the... I guess get the honor of going up and paying my taxes and all that other stuff. But I've never, ever heard anybody in the tax office be disrespectful to any citizen. Everybody explains everything that I think that they need to know and understand. They go the extra mile, all the employees do, go the extra mile to be sure that the citizens understand what's going on. And it, you know, it's a place people don't like to go sometimes, but they, I think they always come away understanding, you know, how the taxes are collected and in some respects, how the taxes are spent. So thank you and thank your department for all they do.
Kind of manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that Rita is one of the most important leaders in this county. And she, it's beyond just her office. I include her and ask her questions and get her advice on many different subjects that have nothing to do with what she does on a daily basis. And the county is very lucky to have her in this leadership role. And I agree that, I just think in fifteen years, tell me, you know, fifteen more years, that'll be just about right.
I don't know about that.
Next thing, they're going to want to get you a cane.
And she has created an environment, a family environment amongst her employees. They really genuinely like each other and they like her. And it's always, if I need a boost for the day, just go up to their area. And you can kind of feel that enthusiasm from them. We appreciate you.
She's certainly a vital part of Allegheny County, good beyond her office. We do appreciate you greatly.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to serve.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Randy Murphy, Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Talk to you a little bit about the Parks and Rec for this year and what's been going on. One, most of you probably know we relocated our office to the Book Committee College. We needed more room. The volleyball program has shown improvement. We went from typically having four teams a year to having five teams this year on volleyball. We worked, I hope somebody's noticed, but we worked really hard this year. The fairgrounds, trying to, as a parent, and the mowing and weed eating, everything else we do down there to make it a little more appealing, curvy appealing too. But we still got a long way to go on some other items, but we have worked really hard on that this year. You know, with baseball, which is one of our softball, one of our bigger programs, we always heard me say that we have problems finding practices to practice for our kids. So we've been going up Pine Creek School and working on that field just a little bit, trying to get it opened up so that we can do that. We have done some powers to hit this year. Our soccer season and golf has ended. Our golf program typically has around eighteen to twenty kids on a normal year. We had almost forty this year. So it really jumped up in numbers and participation. And very successful program. We just have finished a test for your soccer. I think we had eleven teams total this year from ages from five and under up to thirteen. One of our teams went undefeated, and we do play Grace, and we do play Gaylock, we do play Hills. We did have a team to go undefeated with our program. We also, this year with baseball, we had two teams in All-Stars. And when you play All-Stars, you may play teams from other areas than the teams that we normally play. One of our teams, which is a true team, got invited to state this year, which is a big honor for us to be small. But we did not go because of participation with parents out where they hadn't traveled. But we did, it was an honor to be invited. This year, we're teaming up with the Chamber during Truck Retreat. We'll be at the Allegheny Fairgrounds this year. We're also doing a little small festival inside our barn during that night. But we're just teaming up with Chamber on doing this. And we hope that's going to be a big success for everybody to bring them out. We did have a tennis camp this year for our tennis program. It was very successful, had good numbers out on it. And one thing I need to say about the sports programs is that there is no way that we could hold these programs and do what we do without the many volunteers that we have that coaches these teams and spends their time away from our family, away from home to come and coach and help them. We do appreciate that very much. Fairgrounds this year, the number of events were down just a little bit. But the events that we did have, as far as participation, people coming out and coming to them was big. It was really good number of events. I think one of the numbers sticks out as far as the power department had the derby. I think it was over four thousand people this year. Really, only thing I think of numbers are down. Fairgrounds, here before, we had a lot of rain. And I don't think anybody was successful. Maybe that's why our numbers are down. But hopefully this coming year, we can get our, just our event back up where it was. One of our objectives is to enhance our participation for our sports programs, but also for our other facilities, Black Building, Better Park, Lions Foot, everything that we oversee. We'd like to, you know, work on that every year. We do try to promote and enhance as far as the number of events that we have. Parks and Rec, you know, we do everything from birthday parties to clash, to family unions, to baseball and softball programs throughout the year. So we, our hands is in just about everything that happens in this county. We would like to continue upgrading Davis Field, which is where we have plenty of our baseball and softball programs at, making it a little easier for our teams to practice and doing some back cages and stuff down there. That pretty much sums up our year. I hope that people that have gone to the fairgrounds again and seen the upgrades, because I think it does look better than years past when I have worked here, which we've had, I've got really good help in the office. And we've hired some part-time folks that's really helped me out on the grounds and made everything look a lot better this year.
I don't have any questions. I got some comments, so I do, I agree. I think if our grounds looked the best this year, it's looked a long time. I know a lot of extra weed eating and stuff was done over there and the banks beside the bleachers and everything, it looked real good. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Are the people getting used to you being moved to the BDC building from here?
Yeah, and I don't think we ever really had an issue. I was surprised with that. But we've had a couple, so we thought she's still down there. But the corridor, the note, it's actually still on the door that we got moved to Book Committee College. So I think everybody's got used to it by now, yes.
It's not been a problem.
None at all.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Randy, I just want to tell you, y'all's department, people don't realize how many hours you put in, but I appreciate it.
I heard a lot of...
No, thank you.
Golf, is the Parks and Recs into golf? That's my question. Do y'all have golf?
Yeah, we started that program three years ago. You know, my goal first year was eight kids. I said, if we can get eight, probably worth trying it. And I think we had fifteen, sixteen first year and twenty-two last year, I think. And the total numbers, I did say close to forty, was thirty-eight this year. And just a quick note that we had a family that runs or works for the big golf force down in Greensboro that does all the pro-am tours. Tyler's and Taylor made, donated over a thousand golf balls to our golf program this year.
Well, that's great.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that you put your heart and soul into taking care of the kids, and we appreciate that, taking care of the families. And it does, he's working when everybody else is off. You have to bear that in mind, and he's not a workaholic guy, by any means. But he gets it done, and we appreciate you.
Yeah, I'll agree. He's out there when most of us is at the house. Starts early in the morning also. We do appreciate all you do.
Yeah, thanks, Randy.
Okay, moving on down to general business. Cindy Atwood, Jimmy Jones, and Erin Rayton, Allegheny Agriculture Committee.
Thank you. I think we have a PowerPoint presentation that will show you some highlights of the paper first.
And I'll just make some comments as we go through, so that way we'll multi-use this. Our time, but starting off this year for the 2025 fair. One of the things that, as far as our review at the end of the year, that really was an outstanding is the exhibition building, which the extension office with Amy and Carmen and also Michelle and then a lot of other people really helped with the exhibition building. As you see, here's a, we had over a thousand exhibits entered in 2025, which I think for our size county is outstanding, especially when you look at those exhibits are from over three hundred different people. So that was a huge increase. And just really want to thank everybody for their exhibits. Two of the big things, and you want to go to the next slide. We had two entries that were best of show that are actually being presented right now at the State Fair in Raleigh. And one of those, the adult exhibit was from Jen Marlowe. And the best of youth show exhibit was from Molly Bowes. So I think that's really exciting that we have stuff that's being presented down there. So there's some more. And I will say that the flower arrangement on the left, the person who entered it had actually entered that in one of our prior board members, Virginia Hampton, and that was something really special to her for this year. But there's some more pictures of our exhibition building. Going into our livestock shows, the night of the sheep and goat show, the livestock shows went later than anything else. And they were, didn't get over till about eleven-thirty at one of them, we had so many entries. And in total, of all the youth livestock shows, we had three hundred and sixty-one entries with a hundred and four youth that presented animals all throughout the week. But we had individuals from all over North Carolina and Virginia to come and participate, as well as local kids here in our local FFA and our youth groups. Here's some more of our dairy show results from Saturday. But outstanding group of kids there that had participated. And we're very fortunate that the North Carolina Dairy Youth Foundation provides the funding for that event on Saturday. So that's one thing we do appreciate. Okay, next one. One of the, on Saturday, we had our big kickoff with our music. Had a great lineup, outstanding reviews from that. Had a lot of people that had drove in specifically to see certain individuals that day. So that was, we had outstanding music that evening. And one of the big pluses, and had several people actually used it, was the, we had some advanced seating for VIP seating, where we have some turf down out there to help reduce some mud in that area. And that was a big plus, which also the class of two thousand had featured that afternoon to have their reunion in conjunction with the fair. So that was an additional group that had participated and really appreciated everything that was there as far as the entertainment. For those that were able to attend the poultry show on Sunday, we had twenty-five chickens, and there's the group of kids that had participated. It was chickens and rabbits and a couple turkeys. So there's the exhibition of all those. That was a great turnout of local kids from North Carolina. And then there's some highlights from the beef show. As you see, everybody from all youth ages were excited about that. One of the highlights that I think was a major asset this year was the PBS Riddle Register Tour tent. And that was staffed between ten and fourteen people the entire time of the event going on. And the kids were really engaged. There'll be some more pictures of what I was at that tent coming up. But the Friday night event with our truck and tractor pull, first time we've been able to have a truck and tractor pull back here in the county in several years. And the guys putting it on said, y'all should really be pleased. They said, for a group of people that hasn't necessarily worked with doing a truck and tractor pull, we were able to do fifty hooks in just right at three hours. So that was, that was really good, as well as having individual, local individuals, as well as some individuals that came from a little further away. And talking about that, I'll let you stay on this slide just a minute. Some of the furthest individuals that we had attend the fair that participated in the truck and tractor pull were from my own. So they happened to be in this area and was able to get it to fit in. But we had a long list of individuals from Chapel Hill, Brown Summit, Withfull, Blacksburg, all of those areas we were able to pull people in for that event there on Friday night. So there's some more pictures of the rides. As you see, it not only involves the kids, but their parents also and all the activities. So that's, we, the rides is always a big hit with the kids. It's the brochure tour stop. So that's, we, the, the rides is always a big hit with the kids is the brochure tour stops. As you see, there's lots of different activities and, and had gotten really good reviews on, on the PBS. We do want to thank all our sponsors. Should hit that one more time. Yeah, does it? No, okay, go back. So there's all our, our main sponsors. I do want to make sure that, you know, our event sponsors are the ones that we, that help as long as all those. And we're sad to involve Allagani TDA, Allagani County, Bottomley Farms, and S and T Green. All of those were a huge asset. So that's sort of just an overview. I know several of you all were able to go. I know some of you all were there for long hours throughout that week. But we do appreciate all the, all the support. Last slide. But we did want to just say thank you for your all's continued support. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our chairman, Jimmy Jones, to bring you a couple other facts and figures and those types of things. So.
The board members served five hundred and fifty-seven hours of work out there at the fire. Average board member spent thirty hours out there and the minimum was eight minutes or seventy-five. And we need to thank Bill and Greg for helping us a bunch out there because both them worked many days out there at the fire. And the Trojan track girls that come and helped us, that was a big help to the fire. We need to thank them very well for doing that and hope they come back next year. That's for sure. And all that seemed to go over most of the budget, but actually we was under on about everything we projected except the insurance. And we got an extra insurance, a rain insurance in case it rained, so we'd get the fire covered. And we didn't plan that to start with, but we took that insurance out and got it. So the insurance went over, but virtually about everything else was under what we had projected it to be there. So everything was good on that part and we had a lot of assistance from people that was with the fire board helping with the tractor pull and different things too. Gosh, it really helped keep that thing running good there. And I'll turn this over to Cindy and let her, she'll figure in on the, the finance part.
What Aaron Ray has given you is a copy of the, is a copy of the budget, which you were presented with earlier in the year. And we'll just quickly go down through the expense column, the rides, carnival rides, that is. We, the Ag Fair, Ag Fair Committee paid twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. In addition to the twenty thousand dollars of the county allocation was directly for that one thing. Of course, the carnival rides is the thing that draws people in, you know, the children. And, and if the children are interested in coming, then the mom and daddy will be there. I wouldn't say something about that, and that is that we give free tickets to every second grader and fifth grader across the county. So, I mean, that's an incentive. If the kids have free tickets, then mom and dad will bring them. But it also exposes them to a lot of different activities. And so while we, there, that is an expense that is also a plus for our attendance. The truck and tractor pull, we had, had estimated that it would, that would cost about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Actually, it was less than that. We had to pay for the sled, which is the part you saw on the picture, twenty-five hundred dollar rental. We paid out seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in prize money for the different categories. The Saturday night music show was, we budgeted twenty-five thousand. We came in close to that. We had to, we rented a audio help in the stage staging area for, that had all the audio hookups and all that kind of thing. The livestock shows were mostly for the judges and the lodging of nine hundred and fifty dollars of that went to pay the judges, which came from Blacksburg and all over the state. We have qualified, certified judges who come and judge those livestock shows. We paid out to the, the people you saw the pictures of two thousand thirty-five, two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the students that you saw, young men and, and all the way to little toddlers almost, they went home with prize money. And that, that money comes from an outside source for the, for the payouts, but from the livestock, North Carolina livestock.
It's from the, the North Carolina Dairy Youth Foundation pays for part of that.
Yeah.
And then also through the Catalans Association.
That's right.
Pays for the premiums. We just paid for the judges.
So the exhibits, and you saw there was over one thousand exhibits. And if you didn't get out to the exhibition building, it was something else this year. We have, we ended up with, and, and believe it or not, that like first prize is three dollars, second prize is two dollars and third prize is one dollar. And all that ended up being the actual payouts and that's to these thousand exhibits was one thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. So a lot of this is going back to the people who, now granted, they do a lot of work to earn that three dollars or two dollars or one dollar. But, but that shows that they're, they're getting something back for their work. The newspaper, it, we underestimated that. They charged us one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, which was exactly the same they had last year. If you read the Allagani News, they gave us some great, great promotion there. We had signs that we use local person Gary Poole at New River Graphics to do. And we did do that, every chance we got, we tried to do, use local vendors as we did with Gary. We did a local vendor for the tickets that, when it says direct marketing, that covers the free tickets that we gave out. It covers banners that you saw in the pictures where we, we recognized those people who supported us. The wristbands, we actually did not have to expend money this year for, because we used extra funds that we had last year to preorder. And we plan to do that this year with the, with the proceeds from what we had, we had this year. We'll preorder those. We did social media and radio. If you were listening to Galax Radio or Elkin or Wes Jefferson ran different spots, a number of spots there. We were a little bit under budget. The one thing that we were over that Jimmy referred to was the insurance. After Hurricane Helene kind of wiped us out and really hurt our year last year, we decided not to take that chance again. If the carnival rides and some of the rides were wonderful to work with this last year, because obviously it was out of our control, but we decided to have an extra little bit of insurance this time. Cleaning the bathroom and the trash, and, and I will comment that the restrooms were clean, the grounds were kept clean. And we, we paid those people and they did a great job. I'm pleased with that. Snacks, drinks, lunch for the judges, that's way under budget there. Bounce houses came from Boone and they also have their own, their own staff that staffed that. And that was a great help because as you know, and, and I, that's a high liability area. If you don't have the certified people who know how to keep kids from getting hurt in those bounce houses. So that helps us tremendously. The tent rental is the big tent that you saw for the PBS tent. That is all that it cost us, that we did not have to pay for the PBS people to come. And my goodness, the kids who came, that was one of the highlights of the, of the show. It was, there was all these different stations set up and it was very hands-on. It was very, like I went down and watched, these little kids were making slime and oh, that was really cool. You know, they got all excited about that. They did a lot of science, scientific, some math, some puzzles, that kind of thing, some real STEM activities. So it was a, a learning activities for them. And they came away with, every kid that went, came away with a little book bag with a, a book and made to be puzzle and little hands-on things. And being a former teacher, I liked this, the, if they, you identified yourself as a teacher, they gave teachers, let you select at least ten books from your, for your classroom and some hands-on activities. Every kid that came away with a backpack with probably more than fifteen dollars that it costs mom to come in to bring them, more, more than fifteen dollars worth of stuff that they are taking home. So that was a really a, a great thing. So that was well received. We did some extra portageons that were out in the area, four hundred and eighty dollars. Our total budget, we had estimated at a hundred and sixteen thousand. At this point, our actual expenses have been a hundred and ten thousand. There is one outstanding expense that we have not gotten a final, a final number for. We're estimating it at about fourteen, four thousand, which would bring us to a hundred and fourteen thousand. So we're a little bit under what I projected, even though there were a few things that were over and a few things that were under. So a pretty good projection. I will explain to you down here, the sponsorship. Fifty-two thousand, that was fifty-five donors from businesses, corporations, many, many things around the community. So to me, that shows that it, the fair has a lot of community support. So if we got fifty-two thousand out of fifty-five donors, you can see what the, how generous the people were to give us that. We had entry gate fee for about five thousand people came up to be fifty-five thousand and two dollars is what we took in there. For the truck and tractor pull, they, for each pull, they had what was called a hook fee. So the tractors that were competing had to pay a hook fee. So that was eighteen hundred and sixty-five dollars that we took in for that. We had estimated some VIP seating. Truthfully, I did not keep differentiate the, the income for the VIP seating. We just rolled it all into the gate fee. So some of that in the gate fee was for VIP seating. Livestock support, we took in two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So we had projected our total budget income would be a hundred and forty thousand. We were at, came in at a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and ninety-two. So do you have any questions about the, the numbers that you're looking at there?
Questions, comments?
Just a great fair, was I hear.
It, it, it was, it was. I, I do want to take just a minute to say a couple things, how, how much we appreciate this board supporting the fair with, with not only your presence, because I think I saw most everybody out there sometimes during the fair, but also putting your money towards making this a great event for the whole county. And I can't tell you what a, a great agriculture board we have. There are sixteen board members. The last couple of board meetings, we had perfect attendance. All sixteen of them showed up. We had thirteen, I believe it was thirteen board members who actually came and, and gave their time and served. And, and many of them served many, many hours. That he, Jimmy related about the student volunteers. We have to thank Amy Lucas for that. She used her, her influence with her four-H students. And we also got approval for them to be able to use their volunteer hours as Beta Club out, Beta Club Hour credit and for Trojan tracks credit, which is leading to them being able to get a college degrees. And they were excellent help. I, I don't know that we could have, have ever accomplished that. Some of them, and I just briefly looked over, some of them put in twenty-two hours of help with us. So you, you're talking teenagers now who gave up that amount of time to be there and volunteer. And they were so polite and so helpful and just, it was, it, that was a, a real highlight for me. So I think the, there were a lot of wonderful experiences. I really just want to take one second to say thank you to, for the many, many hours that Aaron Ray, Amy Lucas, all, Michelle Hamm, Travis Dell, Molly Dell, Travis Dalton, Molly Dell. There are so many people that went into putting this together and spent enormous amounts of time. And I think it was a wonderful experience. And so I just hope that, that we can do it again next year. Any questions?
No, I got a comment.
Okay.
I want to thank them high school kids because I couldn't keep up the back gate.
Yeah, they were a big plus and very helpful and good job translating. I mean.
Oh, that's true.
That was another big plus, you know.
That's true. And, and Amy is the instigator of that.
We appreciate that.
We certainly appreciate that. That was most helpful. That's right. That's right. So.
I don't have any questions, but it was a great fair and thank the good Lord for the good weather. It was amazing turnout, you know, and I want to thank all the volunteers because we could not do it without them.
Absolutely.
And Judge Richard Dutton, he is there at the gate every day, all day. We all had a good time, but it was a great fair and maybe have best weather next year as we planned for. We appreciate all the county's support.
Absolutely. Could not do it without their support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Okay, item number two is deleted. We move on down to number three. David Spicer, Senior Operations Rocket.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Have a few comments today. The, out in the hallway, I apologize for those things being there in the hallway. That is the battery backup for dispatch. They weigh, they're probably four thousand pounds worth of, or more, worth of batteries sitting there. So we're waiting on the company to come and install that. So I apologize for that sitting in the hallway, but that is for dispatch battery backup. We've had some surveying done, so the, the fields there below the bus garage, they have been surveyed. I don't have the final tallies or the final estimates or things on that just yet. The documentation is still undergoing the process of being completed. So we should have documentation on that so that we can get that part taken care of kind of quickly. The courthouse, the first thing I want to do is to thank all of the volunteers who have come out and worked at the courthouse and the courthouse annex and working in the flower beds and on the grounds. And they have done a tremendous job there and certainly has helped that look a lot better and. And it's helped us tremendously in, in the abilities to maintain those, those things. Those volunteers, I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. We do have an open house scheduled for November the 14th. That'll be at 2 o'clock. It'll go from 2 to 4. So we'll have an open house there at the courthouse on November the 14th. We'll have everything done by then and that should take care of all of those things and be completed with that job. At 90 South Main, there is a new floor in the extension office. So that, that floor has been put down by our employees. So that looks a lot better. A hole in the parking lot has been repaired. There was a large hole growing out there next to where the traffic, the speed bump was. So we've got that taken care of. At EMS, the new striker equipment's here. Most of it has been installed. The new lift systems in the trucks, we've got three trucks that has lift systems in them now. The new monitors, there's been some training going on and I'll have to be a little more training before we can put all of that stuff in service so that all of our people understand how that, how that works. It, it's the same thing. Things is in a different place and it does a little more. So we're doing some training on that and should be taking all those things and putting them on the trucks really shortly. The firegrounds, our sinkhole is back in the parking lot. So we fixed that before the Allegheny Emotion actually had the rodeo. We got that taken care of for a temporary basis so that nobody fell in it and it was all safe. We do have a plan to fix that, so we're going to be working on that in a short fashion to get that taken care of. We are looking into the electrical system out there. We've got some prices on some things, which is very expensive to do electrical work this day and time. So we're working on doing that, maybe doing any piecework so that we can make it a little, a little easier to pay for. At the transfer facility, we didn't have any loads of co-mingle, but we had four loads of cardboard, 18.17 tons. We had scrap metal, four loads at 16.13 tons that yielded the county $2,891.20. TRC is on schedule to have 60% of all documentation and design work done for the end of this month. We are looking at somewhere around the first to the middle of January to go out with an RFP. I did ask about pushing that timeframe up just a little bit and they recommended that we wait till after the first of the year. But in their experience and traditionally, the bids weren't as good if you try to do them in December before Christmas. So I went with their recommendation and I felt like everybody else would be satisfied with that, that if we get more quality bids after the first of the year, then let's go for it. So they're still on schedule, they're still on track. So we will be doing that. We haven't had any other updates on our Red Leg Grant. We do have all of our information to them. That has been presented to their board. So that is all in process and we're just, we're on the waiting side right now. So all that though, will, will be forthcoming. Animal control, we had three well checks, 21 cats and dogs picked up, had nine running at large, had one bite with quarantine, had six traps which yielded part of that 21 pickups with 97 hours, 32 calls and 695 miles. So if that's all in my report, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Good job, Dave. Good job. We appreciate it. Okay, number four is deleted. Moving on down, number five, Mr. Shapley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that. We are very pleased that, you know, Larry has agreed to stay on with us. I think that's going to be great for the, for the county. We've got a lot of momentum going on working together to not only meet the needs of the existing businesses, but to bring some additional businesses into the county. And we're pleased to have you stay on with us, Larry. We had, as we talked about in the last meeting that, the special meeting that we had that we have, I made a proposal that we have like a four-part partnership in the chamber, you know, between the chamber, the TDA, the town and the county. And at this moment, unless you have any additional information that the county and the TDA and the chamber have agreed to, to move forward, we're still waiting to hear what the town's decision is, unless you have anything new. Okay. So we're, we're pleased about that and it's going to mean more economic development focus for us through the chamber in the future and I'll spell that out with, to you in more detail and as we move forward. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to add back to the firegrounds discussion a minute ago we got overlooked, but Larry, Chamber Director was the, was the mainstream for PBS to get to Allegheny County and Sparta for the, for the fair. We appreciate that.
I just heard that.
Okay, moving on down, general business, Ms. Rita Miller.
All right. General business, just for information, I didn't have this until Friday, but the opening bids that have been assigned to the property scheduled for the tax foreclosure auction on Thursday, October the 23rd, 11 o'clock. The property at 103 Shadow Rock Road, the opening bid is 3,400. The property at 53 Duncan Ridge Road, opening bid is 7,656 Royal Acres Lane. The sale has been canceled, payment has been remitted. So general business for consent is the September monthly report. I will note, I'm still waiting on DOT for our license plate agency month end report. So I'll bring that next month. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments? This is not for action, is it?
This is the consent, yes.
So we need to make a motion.
Think you would do a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second and discussion. All in favor? Five votes. Okay, moving on down for general business, this is for action. Rita, you're up again.
All right. So in your package, you're going to have a applicant or a request for approval of a late present use value application from Wishon Hevergreen's LLC. In your packet, I have provided you his letter of request as well as the definition of good cause that the board adopted on January the 18th of 2022.
Good. What's favorable, Board, here? Is, does this meet any of the good calls?
To me, if you look at the paragraph that begins specifically stated, the information in the letter would meet in that paragraph. So he purchased this property and it wasn't in the present use value program. The prior owner didn't have it in the program. And so when he purchased the property, he stated that he didn't realize it wasn't already in the, in the program.
Do you have a recommendation?
I do not. If we go back to the definition of good cause, that would be up to the board to decide.
Every, I think 10 years or something, the Forest Service has to approve land that's in present use value or?
Every eight years, your, your property will come up for an audit. I don't know if the Forestry Service does something on a 10-year basis, but every eight years it would come up.
Eight years.
Now, this particular piece of property that Mr. Wishon bought wasn't in the program. It's a voluntary program. You're not automatically enrolled in it. And the prior owner had never, didn't want to be involved in the program.
So this land wasn't in that program?
No.
Okay.
Isaiah, you don't?
Well, I was just, the reason I ask, I got a letter the other couple of weeks ago that I had to have some property I have to be reevaluated by the tax department, the Forest Service at $5 an acre or something. That, that doesn't have anything to do with this.
Nothing to do with this.
Yeah, because they let me know that I had to, you know, fulfill the requirements to be still be considered use value. So something like this, the owner doesn't get a letter that, that tells him anything?
No, it's up to the property owner to apply. It's a voluntary program.
Well, there, this is my own experience and this was back in the 90s, late 90s, but I had purchased a piece of land that had always been land use. They were farm, but they would not let me take that, put, transfer that to my farm. For three years, I had to show them that my income was arrived from farming for three years before I could get the land use.
I don't know, so I don't know when the assuming liability came into play. I believe when I first came to work, that wasn't an option. Now you can sign, the, the owner can sign assuming liability. And if the tax office finds that it's no longer in use, the new owner would be liable to pay that three years' worth of taxes. And we've had that actually come up this year. A new owner signed liability, didn't continue use, so they're actually having to pay for time that they didn't own property. And that's when you sign that assuming liability, that's part of it.
Where's this property located at?
I'm not sure which particular piece this is, and I don't believe, let me see if there's any information.
Is it in farming use today?
It is not. Well, now, Mr., the, the new owner.
Which one?
Is getting it is. That's why he's applying, he's asking for it. He'll be approved for 2026. He just is asking the board to approve him for 2025 and he didn't apply for 2025.
What you guys say here?
Is it within our legal authority to approve this late application?
It is.
Okay.
Looks to me like this is just thinking and trying to be fair. If it's not in land use today and he's asking for it to be, it's going to go on record in 2026, right?
Correct.
It's being land use, which you have it, part of it planted or whatever. To me, that might be the fair way to start it in 2026 when he's actually planting, using.
One of the reasons that the board defined good cause is to make sure everybody got treated the same, you know? And the good cause was a physical or mental illness, death of the taxpayer immediate family, active military deployment, or proof that the application was not delivered by the postal service. But specifically stated, you said taxpayer neglect, oversight or lack of awareness of the above program will not constitute good cause for a late exemption or exclusion application.
I just think it's hard for the general public to know all the tax laws and, I mean, you're an expert at it. You're the, you're the walking encyclopedia about the taxes. But I think the general public is.
Present use value is a very complicated program to understand.
It, it's hard for them to, to stay on top of it. I'd like to be as fair as we can to the.
Well, I do too.
To the landowner and I would recommend that we approve this late application.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Three, the hoes, the, we had four and you opposed. Three in favor and two opposed. Motion gas.
Who opposed? Yeah, me, I'd like to add to it. I, I guess my concern is you want to be fair with everybody, but you, sometimes when you get in these gray areas and you open up this one door, it opens up a lot of doors and I'm concerned about that. But I will support what the board voted on here, but I, I want to vote against it because of that reason.
Well, that's my thinking, same thing. And, and next year when it's planted and in farm, in land use, you know, would suit me better.
Yeah.
Like you say, we got to look down the road, what takes place next year and the year after and Rita knows as well as I know, we've sat in on these hearings sometimes and decisions are hard to make. You want to help everybody, they can, all you can.
So did I understand correctly, the vote is three to, to approve or to deny?
To approve.
To approve.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, next, April handshake, not, not here.
So these are, these are items for action, Mr. Chairman. So the first thing is the proposed change to the fixed asset policy that is on page 20 that you've had a chance to take a look at over the last couple of weeks. Looking for a vote on that.
I make a motion that we approve the CFO proposed change to the fixed asset policy.
Second.
Motion and second and discussion. All in favor? Five votes.
Thank you.
Mr. Shapley, you're up again.
Yes, sir. The, the next item is a recommendation from the Allegheny County Library to approve Pratt Davis to serve on the local library board. So we're looking for a, a board vote on that request.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five votes.
Thank you.
Our third to the board, Ms. Lisa.
I'd like to request approval of the bids for the surplus vehicles. Was the only bid that we received.
We have that before we ask, do I hear a motion to accept?
I've got a question.
Okay.
What happened with the sign we was going to put on these vehicles when we put the cars up here? People know this for sale.
They, I didn't know.
We had one at one time.
Oh, I didn't know. They posted on the website and on the Facebook page.
You know, more people know they're up there, the more bid on them. We halted one bid one time and changed it and got five thousand more dollars.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, we'll do that. So the floor is open for a motion? Or is what we want to rebid, is that what you said?
Well, we, we did the last time because nobody noted, parked someone up here and put a sign on them and they brought more money, a lot more money.
All right, got you. Is that you making that a motion?
I'm making a motion, put a sign on them.
So we got a, what's the proper procedure here? We got this.
I think we, we did that the last time. We didn't accept the bid and.
Okay, well, we got a, we're not going to accept.
Right, and it was.
The seed bids been proposed and Greg's making a motion.
Was this one of the vehicles that could be out front or was it not?
There's two of them out front.
Okay, it is out front then.
Yeah, there's no signs on them.
Because some of them.
Some of them.
Yes, some of them are inoperable and I didn't, I didn't think we'd want to pay a, a bill to have rollback, bring them down here just so we get, you know, I, I thought we'd lose money.
Neil, I'd say you're right about that.
But the two it drove, both of them drove down here? Yes, we need to put a sign on them so people can see them.
Okay.
Okay, Greg made the motion to rebid.
To accept.
Putting back out to, got a second over here. Any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Thank you.
There was a sign around here somewhere to add it. We'll look for it.
Okay.
Lisa, you're up again.
So the next thing I have is the approval of the propane bid for the county facilities. This is the only one that we received. This is the only one that we received.
Right. Hold for, for a motion. Got a motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Mr. Shapley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so on this release of the solid waste fee, uh, for the, it was requested by a gentleman in our community. You see on pages, uh, twenty-two to twenty-four, you've got a chance to review, uh, the situation. On page twenty-five, you see a summary of what, uh, we're asking the board to take a vote on. Page twenty-five is between you, your voting.
Okay. Bobby, go ahead. Bobby's got a question for you there.
On, on the, uh, solid waste fees, the animal mortalities is sixty dollars a ton, large animals, large amounts of animals with a minimum of twenty dollars. I don't understand, what if they bring in two or three cows or horses at a ton?
We weigh them. It depends, it depends on the weight when it comes across the scale. If it's not ac- applicable to the weight of a ton, twenty dollars is a minimum so that we can act, at least recoup some of the money that it costs us to send that down the road in the solid waste stream.
Doesn't it cost us about seventy-some, seventy-five dollars a ton?
Solid waste fee is seventy, seventy-five dollars for solid waste fee. Um, we did this so that it gives the farmers a little bit of a break, but, um, the, the sixty dollars a ton for that, then we, uh, you know, we, we allow that so that, that, um, the farmers, they're already losing money on that. If we bring waste in, that we've got seventy-five dollars a ton, that stuff is added to, and, and a lot of that goes into the, um, pile down there that we have to have ground. Um, so that costs money as same as it does for solid waste stream to go to Caldwell County. Um, but the sixty dollars a ton for that was, was so that we give farmers a little bit of a, a break on that.
Okay.
Correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I got a question for Rita, if she doesn't mind going back, her on the hot seat. So I, I got the ordinance of that solid waste specifically. I mean, I don't see real property, personal property. So how do you all determine, what do you go by to determine whether you charge a solid waste fee or not?
So our procedure is when, um, three figures out to measure new construction is when we apply the solid waste fee to the property.
So she, when does she go, what process of the building does she go out to measure? Probably when the foundation sometime?
Under roof, foundation it could be, if she's in that area.
Yeah.
Um, she just, you know, she goes by area, so.
But there has to be a structure on that site
Yes, yes.
before there's a solid waste.
Construction has to begin. And the reason we started doing that many years ago is so that we didn't have so many that we, we missed getting solid waste fee.
Well, here's the problem I see, like, I know, uh, Mr. Cothran had asked for this because of until CO is provided. The problem with that is, a lot of people do temporary power and hook in, and they start living in their house. It's not legal, but they do sometimes. The way this project is going with three projects going on, and it sounds like they're doing it as it, as they go, this, this CO may not happen for a long time. So it's another one of those things, if we open that, now if we want to change the ordinance, how we do that, or how we decide when we start charging solid waste, it's fine to talk about that, but at this time, I don't, I, I can't support, you know, because it, again, it will open up a door, and we're about to get into some major, sounds like some major construction of more houses. And if we go down the line with this, we're going to be hit with a lot of people like saying, I don't think it's fair that we pay this, and we're taking our construction debris, and then we're paying both, you know? So it's, it goes back to that fairness again, what's fair. Um, I just, I just think we're, we, we're going down a slippery slope until we revisit that. You know, if we want to revisit, that's fine, but the CO thing is, it could be a while.
Right now, there is no report available of when COs are given by the bill inspections.
So, so you all don't receive a CO clarification?
And from my understanding, there is no report that can be generated for that.
Right. So see, you don't really even know when the CO, once you start giving this graces to these customers or these, uh, residents, when do you start it back?
And we don't have the staffing to go out at the end of every year and double check every house that we do.
Yeah, I think, I think, well, I would make a mistake if I supported that. So that's my thoughts for those reasons.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Cothran, what he told me was on the tax department website, if it wasn't finished, you didn't have to pay it.
It did, it did say habitable dwelling, and that is, that is something that it said, that's...
That's what he was going off of.
And, and what I'm saying is, it can be habitable dwelling before we actually get a CO. Uh, not really legal, but I see a lot of people do that sometimes. So then you can technically take your trash to the landfill. Um, and then it could be some folks taking trash to the landfill and not paying for it, or at least paying that one time of year fee.
Well, the part about what it says on the webpage, or bugs make some, she's got three properties, correct?
Correct.
One build, three houses. Is any of them in, up in there, roof on anything?
I, I think they're all under roof.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they, uh, uh, my understanding is Cerisa don't even go out and measure until there's actually a building.
Well, I just have a problem with it being on the webpage.
I, I have removed that.
You have removed it?
Yeah.
Is that kind of, could be very misleading to a lot of people's looking, you know? They get caught in this situation. That's the only thing that bugs me about it. Uh, I believe everybody paying their share, but to me, since it was on that.
I think clarification on that website would be, that's helpful. It sounds like you're already working on that.
I think going forward, we've got some work to do about solid waste fee, clarification of definitions, things like that.
Right. More questions?
I, I think it would be tough for us to go against, if it, if it was previously listed on the, on the website and is now since been removed, you know, I, I just don't think that looks right for us to, to, to change it up after the fact. Um, I, I would support us making it right down the road. Maybe down the road or a later date, we could have a work session and discuss how we're going to move the ordinance forward, how it's going to be relevant now. But if that's what it said, I think that's what we're going to honor.
I do. I think it needs some clarification, and we'll get that done here shortly. So I guess entertain a motion, see where it goes.
I'll make a motion that, uh, release for the solid waste fee from Mr. Cothran.
Got a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? None of them. All ready. We appreciate it, Rita.
One other question. Did you check in to see the legal stat, you know, us changing that up? And sorry, I, I meant, didn't, I meant to vote against that. I'm sorry about that, if you correct that. Um, did you check the legal, like, when we have these cases that come up like that? Is it?
We did, and at the last meeting, what was mentioned was that, um, the, the process that we've been following was one that we understood to be correct. Um, the school of government has gotten back to us and said that they don't approve of the process that we're using. But at this point, we're getting ready, because of the transfer facility, to revisit exactly how we're handling every issue with that, you know, fees and the structure. So everything that we are doing, we're going to revisit, so we may not handle this process going forward the same way. I mean, I, I know we're not going to, it's just coming up with that new process of how we're going to handle it. Um, you're going to end up voting on it because the money's going to change no matter what. Um, so I think we're, we're going to end up having a new, um, a new ordinance that we end up passing, which I don't think has changed, or we haven't voted on that for a while now. Yeah, so that's something I think we're supposed to be doing annually, and we haven't been. So we're, we're just going to revisit the whole process going forward.
So we're okay legally, but they just don't like the way we do it?
Well, I mean, no, technically, we are not doing it legally. Um, what we just voted on is not legal, but that's the process that we've been using.
Right.
So going forward, we're going to have to correct that.
Yes, and the reason I asked that is because when I was down there for a couple of days, um, during the school of government, and they were saying that, uh, you know, a lot of times, things come up and we waive fees and stuff, and they, they, the lawyer told me there that that's not legal.
Right.
Because, because what happens is, those fees are taken care of the people that we do waive it on. Everybody else in the county pays for it. So they were saying it's not legal.
Even though we advertise, even though we advertise.
You can't give anything
Right.
from the county. In other words, because we have, um, taxes all through the county, and if somebody comes to ask for a waiver, you know, and we have hardships and stuff, and we have to deal with that accordingly. But they just said straight up, it's illegal.
Yes.
That's exactly what they said to me.
So the entire process that we've been doing
Yeah.
is incorrect.
Yeah.
So, which we, we assumed, we, we realized that, but we are going to be revisiting it, and then we'll reassess once we've looked at, um, what's going to happen with our grant for the transfer facility, and then redo how we're, we're handling our, our processes going forward. So we, we, we talked about that last meeting, and we agreed that that's what we were going to do going forward.
Rita, back up and re-vote, because he made a mistake on his vote. He voted, he wanted to vote.
Yeah, I just wasn't paying attention. I had other things.
So we need to...
You can't vote again in another meeting.
That's true.
Just let it go. It's fine.
Well, it wouldn't have been what it passed, so.
Yeah, it's fine. No, no big deal.
Alright, moving on. April hand, Bill, you feeling him for April?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
Um, so this next, uh, piece is to approve or disapprove the transfer of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-plus dollars that we got from FEMA, uh, for the hurricane, transferred into the general fund.
Someone's...
So moved, got a motion, need a second. Got a second, all in favor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Uh, excuse me.
So this money here is going into the county general fund, right?
Yes.
It's not going to the fire departments?
It's going to the county general fund.
Okay, so it ain't going to the fire department?
No.
Okay, I ain't getting that else.
All in favor? Five oh.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, the, the next is a review of approval or disapproval of an increase in the retirement fund for our employees that are over age sixty-two. Um, this is recommended by the group that, that we work with. Um, I don't have a tremendous amount of details on it. Haven't had a chance to get, get that, and I, we didn't really, we didn't know that April was going to be sick, obviously, but, um...
Let me ask you this, is this press for time? Can we table it?
Yeah, we sure could.
Does she's here?
Sure.
Does that suit you?
Yeah.
See what everybody's table is?
Yeah.
Till April back?
Uh-huh.
Alright. Alright, you're still up.
Okay. Um, first thing I want to do is, we're very pleased to, um, announce to you our new Veterans Administration, um, Director, Wes Brennan.
He from, he from around here.
Hey, Wes, if you'd like to say a few things, few words, we'd like to hear from you. First off, uh, good afternoon, uh, while we're here. Thank you for your support behind me and giving me that vote of confidence. But thanks to Mr. Shapley, Tiffany Boyer, Mike Scott, Theresa McPerry, Officer, County, for helping the Veterans Services Office here while it was, uh, absent. Also Allison Hupman, now in Wilkes County. Uh, those folks have been so good to me and, uh, helping me get started. Uh, and I'll be doing some on-the-job training in both facilities throughout the next couple of weeks. We are planning on getting me trained starting in January. Uh, I was advised that I'd be the new guinea pig for the new service training, so, uh, got some new stuff coming out. It's an honor to be back in the community after, after coming out of retirement, uh, for this job opening, and I appreciate the vote of confidence that you give me, sir. Uh, you will be, uh, I pledge to you to give the best service to our veterans in this town, in this county. Make sure that they get every benefit that they are entitled to, and also, uh, spouses for death benefits, which is very important. And as those are people that are watching this broadcast right now, if you are a veteran and in need of service, bring me your DD-214. Uh, spouses, bring me death certificates and marriage certificates, those kind of things. That helps me get your process started, and, uh, we'll, we'll get this thing on the road, and we're going to make it the best department in the state of North Carolina. So thank you again, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Wes.
You guys have a good day.
We...
Yeah, I think it's important for the broadcast to mention to all the veterans, they need to be registered with the clerk of court, uh, with the registered deeds.
Yes.
That makes the process a whole lot easier, and it moves quicker. Uh, so that's something that a lot of veterans still haven't done, that they need to do. And then also, uh, your office is in a different location, and it has been in the past. And, um, I think Mr. Shipley and, and David agreed to move it to the very front of the, uh, administration building, so it's easier for a lot of the disabled veterans to get in and see you.
Absolutely. And, you know, if, uh, I would like to say this, if you've got a, a claim that you wish to claim or to process, please make an appointment with me so I can allot you that time that it needs so we can work together. And it usually takes about an hour to do the interview and get all the paperwork done and set up so I can get your claim in. Uh, and, and I just ask for the patience of the, uh, of the folks while I'm learning this, but I can promise you this, if I don't know the answer, I will find it out. And you will have a phone, phone call, brand, returned to you within forty-eight hours, and we will get your stuff took care of. Uh, that's the one thing, being a veteran myself, uh, our veterans deserve the best care and attention that they can possibly get, and as long as I hold this title, that's what they're going to get. So thank you, guys.
We appreciate you welcoming you to the county.
Thank you.
County guy, sure do.
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're thrilled to have him on board. Uh, this is one of the most important positions we have.
It is, certainly is.
Our veterans are some of the most important people that, that we have in this community. We owe tremendous amount to those vets, and I want them to get the best that they can. I don't have any doubt that Wes can, can deliver that.
I agree.
Also, I, I do want to say how pleased and amazed I have been at, um, Surrey County stepping forward and saying, Mike, Mike Scott there, who is the veterans person for them, you know, came forward and said, I understand you're going to be looking for somebody new. They, they may have to have training, you know, we'll help any way we can. And, I mean, and they were, they, as Wes said, they agreed to let us put their number on the, on the door for a period of time while we were going through the interview process. And they have just gone so far beyond what you might expect out of a neighbor to do, and I want to just publicly recognize them for doing that. And, uh, Mike Scott's going to continue to work with Wes, and, and I think he's made a contact with another county, too, that you mentioned. Yeah. Um, in order to help him get certified as quickly as we possibly can.
So nothing like good neighbor.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I wanted to just fill you in on a few things that have happened since the, the last meeting. We, uh, we were asked by Appalachian State, uh, to have a meeting with some of their students that want to get into, into public administration and, um, and David and, and April, was April with you on that? Um, were able to conduct that, those quite, you know, answer those questions from those kids, and we really, I think that was kind of a nice, uh, addition to their curriculum, to be able to talk to people that are actually doing the kinds of jobs that, that they want to do in the future. So I'm looking for, uh, I think we'll have a closer relationship with App State in the future, and, and one of the reasons, um, is because of Sam. You know, Sam has a, a friend You know, Sam has a, a friend that's, or friends that are, that are doing their internship, you know, with them and, and he connected us back with them and looking forward to those other connections that he may have.
Yeah, April, April and Sam met with them online, I, I had another.
Oh, okay.
I had another obligation.
Okay. Um, on the ninth of, uh, October, I attended the downtown business owner meeting here in Sparta, which was well-attended. We had probably twenty-five to thirty folks that were there and we just talked about issues facing business owners and what we could do as a town and a county to try to help them. Um, I attended the Council of Government fiftieth anniversary dinner in Boone on the tenth of, of March and that probably had a couple hundred people attended. What did I say?
Tenth of March.
Tenth of March, the tenth of October. Um, that was really well-attended and I attended the fundraiser for the Arts Council here in Sparta on the eleventh with an art teacher as a wife and, you know, I, I needed to absolutely be there. Uh, on the fourteenth and fifteenth, I went to the North County Rural Economics Summit, which was held in Hickory. And that was an excellent event, probably a hundred people attended from all over the state. And, uh, I have, uh, I'm accessing information on, uh, affordable housing. Uh, that's come out of the School of Government, that can help us a little bit here with some of our planning for affordable housing moving forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
County Commissar comments. I guess we start it on your end.
Uh, one of the recurring themes that I heard throughout, uh, our meeting today, when we had folks from, uh, the Ag Fair come and talk, I was looking back at the Mountain Heritage Festival, looking back at our recreation department, talking about, um, the courthouse, flower beds, things like that, they were all volunteer-centered, so just like to take a moment to say thank you to everybody who took time out of their schedule to volunteer for those things. Uh, volunteers are what makes our county great.
Okay, Bobby?
Uh, just a few things for, really for next month, Veterans Day is November the eleventh. We'll have a ceremony at Veterans Park. Uh, also in November, on November the tenth, it's the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the Marine Corps. Uh, we'll be celebrating that. And on November the eighth, the Marine Ball will be at Old Bow and tickets are available. And I believe you can also see our new Veterans Service Officer for a ticket if you'd like, like to attend. Uh, we encourage anybody to attend, uh, to, to that dinner. It's a very patriotic evening and, uh, as usual, Tommy Means does an outstanding job at Old Bow. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Greg?
Nah, I'm good, everybody stay warm.
All right, Timmy?
Yeah, I got two or three things, so the back, sort of re-tracking a little bit, um, to say thanks again to, to Brian Wood and his, you know, his years that he's in time invested in and working for the county. Um, also wanted to say to reiterate about Randy's situation. I go to my grandkids' basketball, soccer, it's Saturday and Randy's always there. I don't know when he ever has home time, but he's there. He does put a lot of time in, I want to thank him for that. Um, the Ag Fair, um, I think that group has put on a really good, I know it, the weather made it even more perfect, but those guys and gals and everybody involved in that done it. I want to thank them again for the great job that they've done and I think that's something that, that's a very big event that's, that the county helps put on every year and it's, it's great for the, a lot of the locals, you know? Uh, yes, we bring in a lot of the outs, some outside folks too, which is fine. Also wanted to thank Larry for reconsidering his situation and staying here in the county to help us, so we, I really appreciate that and thank you so much for that. And also, which Wes has done, gone, I wanted to congratulate him and thank goodness we got somebody that's running that department now and because like you say, there's a lot of, a lot of red tape, a lot of things goes in the veteran stuff that, that's, uh, very, very needful in the local area. And I think he'll do a great job. Um, other thing is, I know Lisa, this is our first year here, but we always, um, participate in trunk-or-treat. You, you, you on board with that? So yeah, we always, um, that's always been a fun time that we participate in any, all the, any of the commissioner can participate, but I've, I've been involved with that last couple of years and it's really fun to do. And I think that was it, I just had two or three things, I want to make sure because trunk-or-treat's coming up next before our next meeting. So, but all that said, thanks, everybody, hope April's getting well. I'm sure you don't want to keep doing that job. So, uh, but thank you, thank you Lisa for your help with some things too, but that's it.
Thank you, Timmy. I don't have much to add, the, the trunk-or-treat be the next deal coming up and we had trunk-or-treat out there some years back, six, seven years ago and, and the barn is a good place with the building in the one and, uh, it's a good, safe place to get people out of the road, kids, you don't have to worry about them. Had a lot of fun. And the fire, I just tickled the test the way the fire has grown this year, grown this year. Uh, there was black building, all the exhibits was a lot more than we've ever had and, and that's, the Ag Advisory Board pulls that thing off and Cindy, Secretary of Treasure that, Jimmy Jones is the chairman, but they've got a good group of people, uh, to work with and, and, uh, they all support it, all get out there and help with it and, and, and it goes back to being volunteers that we, Allegheny County, Noah County can operate without volunteers. Uh, whatever you do and you have to have a lot of volunteers to, to make it work and, and hopefully we can keep growing the fire next year and get bigger and bigger. Veterans Day, like Bobby says, November eleventh, let's go out and participate in that. And we got another Allegheny County employee, it's retiring about forty-two years worth, that'd be Debbie Brewer over at the library. She's, uh, about the end of this month, I believe, so wish her well. Anybody else got anything? All right, we got a request for a closed session. The General Statute one forty-three dash three-eight, three-one-eight dot one-one confidential record.
Do we take five?
Yep, let's get a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to close in, close session.
Closed session, let's take five. Thank you, Larry, thank you.